Good evening. This is a special meeting for the City of Largo. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Thursday, September 3rd, 2020. We're gonna, we have a few items on the agendas this evening, and they're all very important. We're gonna start with the approval of tonight's agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0. We're gonna move into the meat of the meeting, which is, um, the first is ordinance number 2020-48.
Do you want to see my screen now? Okay, great. Well, good evening, and thank you for joining us tonight for a special meeting on the annual budget and tax rate. The first item before the commission is the first reading of ordinance 2018-66, which is a multi-step process governed by Florida state law to adopt an annual operating. State trim law requires the adoption of a tax rate prior to the adoption of the annual budget to ensure that the proper revenue is generated to fund the budget that's presented to the commission. The rate that's approved this evening will appear in the newspaper along with the final annual budget on Sunday, September 13th. The final adoption of the tax rate and budget will be on Tuesday, September 15th, at the regular city commission meeting. So, the city manager's proposed budget recommended a tax rate of 5.5 mils. Since that time, we've received additional data points on the impacts of COVID-19 on major revenue sources in the general fund, primarily related to sales tax. Those impacts were included on the reconciliation list attached to your agenda memo, and amount to approximately $1.2 million less revenue in the general fund for the current five-year planning period. Since receiving this information and in anticipation of additional impacts, the city manager is now recommending that the city commission consider adoption of the rate 5.62, which is the city's current tax rate. The 5.62 rate represents a 6.96% official tax increase, which is less than the total property value increase of 8.19%, thanks to new construction and annexation efforts that went on in the city over the last year. The total general fund revenue increase is 8.2% over the current year, and helps provide the needed revenue to work towards the city's strategic priorities and fund balance goals. This rate, along with others that we discussed tonight, will require a supermajority vote of the city commission. At the August 10th work session, the city commission requested that staff provide additional information before adoption of the tax rate. The first was the impacts of the rate 5.6 mils, and the second was to provide the actual impact of all the rate options on the sample small business in Largo. Both of those items were added to the millage rate analysis chart, which is attached in your memo. For those watching at home, I'll briefly review this information. So, all of the analysis provided works off of that property value increase of 8.19% for non-home-studded and commercial properties, and a 2.3% value increase for homesteaded properties. The total value increase of 8.19% brings the value of one mil up to approximately $780,000 over the current year, and that's a total of $5.3 million per mil. The total impact on the general fund of that value increase when leaving the rate the same at 5.62 mils is approximately $2.2 million more in revenue to the general fund. The alternative rate of 5.6 mils affects a $2.1 million increase over the current year. Impacts of these rates selected, the impacts of these rates on selected properties is what's presented on the other side of the slide and in your attachment. And on an average single-family home, the annual impact is $19 increase over the current rate, and with the 5.6 rate, it's a $17 annual increase. And on that small business option, the sample business in Largo, the annual impact for the current rate is $171, while the 5.6 rate is $98 a year. And then finally, on that high-value property, you can see the difference between the two rates. It's approximately $187, although the annual increase in either scenario is nearly $4,000 a year. So, this chart provides a visual to aid in decision-making and reflects the updates in the tentative budget that's included in the next item. And as you can see, while we are drawing down fund balance to initially deal with the current known impacts of COVID-19, we do, with this rate of 5.62, work to rebuild the fund balance toward the target of 20%, although we do not reach it in the current planning window. I did not create a separate slide for the 5.6 rate. The revenue impact in one year is less, is $100,000 less than the 5.62 rate, and that's approximately 1/10 of a percent of fund balance. So, this concludes my presentation on the recommended tax rate of 5.62 mils, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Ordinance number 2020-48, an ordinance of the City of Largo, Florida, establishing the property tax rate for the City of Largo for the fiscal year commencing October 1st, 2020, and ending September 30th, 2021, at 5.6200 mils, 6.96% higher than the rolled-back rate of 5.2545 mils, providing an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have any citizens' comment on this item?
I see none.
Any questions from the commission?
Wow.
Commissioner Holmes.
Thank you. Merity, I'm on your, uh, you've got an example here of tax rate, uh, direction, and on the last page, this is the ending fund balance percentage. And I'm reading this thing. If we went along with 5.5, the basic difference is you're gonna have 14.2% fund balance, and if you go to your 5.62, it's gonna be 15.16. I mean, realistically, at 5.5, we have our expenses covered, but this is strictly fund balance, then? Yes? No?
Um, well, yes and no. So, I think if you just look at the first year, yes, definitely, we're working to build fund balance. But if you really look across the five years, which is what we have in mind when we're proposing tax rates, you can see that we're just hovering at that 14% rate. And, you know, the city commission fund balance policy does indicate that we can draw down fund balance in times of need, you know, those rainy days, and it's certainly raining right now. But we also do need to work to incrementally increase fund balance every year until we rebuild to that target. So, the city manager's recommended rate, although we're not hitting that target of 20% in the five-year period, we are working to rebuild.
Okay. How deep into reserves did we go this year?
Uh, well, we ended last year at over 25% fund balance, and...
Well, let's, let's not do percentages. Let's let the people know the number. What was the number of the fund balance? Was it 20 million?
Oh, I'm gonna ask Will if he can pull up that. I have, like, many things on my screen, and I don't have that.
Give me one second.
Open right now.
Okay, Will, when you're looking for that, I'm just looking for the real number. What was the, I, I guess I should've just grabbed the budget book, because it's close to my ankle right now. But I just wanted to see what the actual dollar figure was, because I know we would, oh, but when you're looking for, what was the balance the year before? And that'll give you how deep we went into this year.
I think my, my initial estimation without looking at it is, I believe, we've drawn down approximately $5 million in fund balance between the two years. That number's standing out in my mind, but I would need to look at the exact number.
Yeah, my bad. I should've just grabbed my budget book.
Will will grab it for us.
Because he's fast.
Yeah, if we wanna go through a couple.
Turn your speak, turn your speaker on, Will. You're, you're muted right now.
Yeah, give me one second. I'm almost there.
It's the one limitation with digital meetings. They don't have 50 screens in front of me.
Yes.
Yeah, the positive sign is we don't have to put on a necktie.
Yes, so we ended the fiscal year 19 with an actual unrestricted fund balance of $19,811,000. The estimated 2020 ending fund balance is $16,031,000, and budget 2021, um, as proposed right now, would be ending at $14.9 million. So, looking at an impact from the end of actual 19 to what budget 2021 would put us at of about, uh, close to $5 million.
That's all my questions for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the commission? Or comments? I, um, I, I just wanna talk a little bit about, I think that we might wanna consider, um, the 5.6 number, simply because it's a little bit lower than the current number, and it still gets us moving in the right direction on fund balance. We've been pretty clear about, about our desire to maintain, get to 20% fund balance and, and move towards that direction. The 5.5 moves in the wrong direction. And I think that, seeing that we, you know, we recently passed an increase in, in sewer funds, because we have to. And, and I think that's, that's something that we have to do. I, I think that we don't have to stick to the 5.62. I think we can, and I, I wanna make sure I'm saying the right numbers, but I think we can move to 5.6 and still move in the right direction and give a little bit of a break, even though it's not a huge break to our property owners here in the city. So, that's kind of my take on, on, uh, the different numbers that we have presented today.
Mayor, I have a comment.
Sure.
I'm, I'm prepared, um, to support the 5.62. I, I mean, it, for all the right reasons and for all the reasons you mentioned, if, if, as a group, we wanna come in slightly lower at 5.60. I mean, I understand that. It's a nice gesture. I thought a little bit more about the, the, um, the action we took the other night on wastewater fees, and, you know, there's also a kind of a strange way to look at that, too, and leave it to me to find that. But it's also, uh, if you wanna keep your bill the same on the wastewater, there's another, since it's come, it's billed based on your use, your consumption of water, it's a nice way to look at ways to conserve water and put your bill back where it ought to be. And that would go along with our sustainability initiatives. But I, I am certainly prepared to support the 5.62. I'd, I'd like to maybe hear what everybody else is on that.
Thank you.
Hey, Mayor, I have a question. Merity, or, or Will, one of you guys, I'm sure, would be able to answer this for me. So, when we're looking at the fund balance through '25, or FY '25, what percentage of rate increase are we looking at to continue to move forward like that?
Sure. So, but we aren't really projecting a rate increase necessarily, but we are projecting a revenue increase of 6% annually. So, we stopped doing the rate projections, because it could be anything based on the property values. But, um, you know, this would assume, if, if we were to leave the rate the same, that we would have at least a 5% increase, or a 6% in property values every year.
So, and, and, and do you still think that that would hold true, especially for next year and maybe the following with COVID?
Um...
Without us having, obviously, a, a, you know, increase in, in the revenue as far as the value of the property?
So, you know, I don't know in the crystal ball world. I don't have one of those that tells me that, unfortunately. But I have a feeling that if we were to get 5% increase in revenue next year, that would be pretty generous. You know, I think the residential retail market is strong, but there's not, there's not a lot of volume. And the commercial market is really where I think we have a lot left to be seen and what will happen. So, I, you know, unfortunately, I don't know. But what we're hearing is that the commercial market is probably gonna have the biggest impact on property values next year.
So, yeah, and that's kind of where I, what I heard as well. I was on, in a meeting with Mike Twitty, the property appraiser, last Friday. And I believe Commissioner Carroll was in that meeting as well with the Suncoast League of Cities. And, and he pretty much expressed the same concerns. And, and that's, so that's where my concern lies, is, is, you know, are, are we, I'm, I'm kind of falling in line with Commissioner Carroll here as far as where I would like to go with the millage rate, because I'm concerned that, you know, we're, 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 this is a, I think the assumption is, might not be great. And, I mean, I know that's where we wanna go, but I think that we, we might be, um, in, in, putting ourselves in a bad spot for the next couple of years by, by, uh, allowing this, uh, the, the millage rate to, to go down. I mean, I'm, again, do, I don't have any, any hard feelings about 5.62 or 5.6. And, you know, I'm, I'm more than willing to go either way probably on that. But as far, any lower than that, I'm, I'm definitely not a fan of. So, thought I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Commissioner Holk, your, your hand disappeared for a second. I couldn't tell it was up.
I know. I saw that. So, I'm, I'm good also with either the, um, the 5.62 or the 5.6. But I do have a question. Has there been any projections as far as, like, possibly the foreclosures that could happen resulting from the COVID? Because I know a lot of mortgage companies did forbearances. Some of them are actually putting them on the back end. Some companies are not. I, I just hate to see a bunch of people that are all of a sudden owing, you know, three to six months' worth of payments on their home, which would be near impossible to make up for most people. But, um, that would definitely have an impact on, um, on our property taxes and things that are being paid in, correct? I mean, I, I don't know if there's been any projections towards, has anybody tried to figure out any numbers of possible amount of foreclosures in, in our area?
I have not seen any yet, no.
But what, with, um, one thing that I heard from the property appraiser specifically concerning foreclosures is that regardless of employment numbers and, and the effects of COVID, residential property values are still very strong. Whereas the foreclosure issues from, I don't know, eight, nine years ago, property values had dropped quite a bit. So, people were behind in, in, they were behind in, uh, they were underwater, I think is what it's called.
Okay.
So, they, they owed more than the properties were worth. That's not the case for most properties right now, because the property values have gone up. So, although there's gonna be challenges with how these folks catch up with payments, they're probably not gonna walk away from their properties because they've got a lot of equity in them. So, so, uh, that, you know, I don't, I don't expect, he doesn't expect that there'll be a big foreclosure issue from the current situation. Just to touch on that, answer that a little bit.
Thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner Finger.
Sure. I just happened to see something about that the other day regarding foreclosures. And they said that currently, there was of the number, which I don't remember the total, but Pinellas County was currently making up 8% of their residential foreclosure. How that, where, you know, 8% across Pinellas County and where Largo falls in between there, I don't know. But just adding to the conversation, I did just see that the other day about that. So, I would support a, the 5.62 as well, because I don't, because we don't know what's going to happen necessarily, given our, given the situation we've been in, and to can be consistent with what we've set out to do regarding keeping our fund balance strong. I agree with comments made already by fellow commissioners about moving forward with that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted, you know, I'm comfortable, I'm certainly more comfortable with 5.6 than I am with 5.62. And, and I'd like to remind everybody that, uh, the projections for this year, as well as the future years, have been a 6% revenue increase each year, year over year. And 5.6 or 5.62 are both significantly above that. And so, so I think that we should keep that in mind. I understand that next year is uncertain. Last year, this year was uncertain, you know? Kim Adams, I don't know what he says, but he, it's all guessing, right? And our, our, two years ago, we said we're gonna maintain a six point, or a 6% revenue increase year over year. I think it's reasonable and makes sense to pad that a little bit, and either one of these numbers pads that a little bit. Commissioner Holmes.
Well, that was a fly.
Oh, okay.
When you look at the chart here, the difference between your 5.6 and 5.62 is $2 a year, 80 cents a month. That's it.
Yeah, it's a $100,000 to the general fund, roughly.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, looking at the figures, I understand that. But, you know, there's a lot of people in, in the City of Largo who are still hurting from this COVID stuff. You know, your unemployment is still there. These people are still behind on their payments and everything else. We look at this thing and say, well, it's only $2. Well, you know, $2 is $2. We just, we did the, the rate increase on the, on the sewer rate the other day. So, we're gonna sit there and we're gonna give them a rate increase on the property tax. And that's why, you know, I, I'm looking at the folks who are just trying to get by right now. And, I mean, I, I understand the fund balance and everything else. You know, I, I also understand this thing that, you know, Trump is pushing about no payroll withholding tax for the rest of the year, which is an idiotic idea. But that, those, those birds are gonna come home to roost. So, I'd like to see a lower rate. That's my personal opinion.
Mayor, so, you know, I, I believe that, um, you know, I think Commissioner Carroll stated this earlier, but, you know, we, we have made a concerted effort over the last several years to, to increase our, our fund balance to a, to a level where we are comfortable for the, the, the time where, you know, God forbid, or, you know, hopefully it doesn't happen anytime in the very near future, but, you know, when, when a hurricane or something hits. And that's gonna be a very, much more significant impact than, than COVID or anything else. And I believe that, and, and, you know, when you're talking about the, the residents of Largo that, you know, are, are, are just barely getting by, and, and I know there's a lot of them, and, and I, I truly understand that, and I've, I've been in those situations myself. The services that we provide in the City of Largo are what those residents kind of have come to expect and will always expect. And I think that we are able to provide those by using this. You know, sometimes we have to dip into the fund balance to continue to provide those services. And I think having that little bit of a pad there to help continue to have those services available, especially for those residents, is what we're trying to do here. So, and that's how I look at it when I, you know, when I'm looking at a little bit of an increase. I understand that it, it can be tough. I mean, a couple of dollars can mean a lot to, to a lot of people. And, um, but I know, though, that when they're going to use our parks, or when they're going to, you know, use some of the other facilities and, and services that we provide, it's there anytime that they need it. So, I, you know, I, that's where I, that's where I'm coming in at, and that's kind of where I, you know, that's what I, I truly believe and feel that way. So, I'm, I'm happy with the 5.62.
Right, are there questions or comments? Commissioner Carroll, you're on mute still. There you go.
Also, I think we need to keep in mind that this is the first discussion of where we established this millage rate, and, you know, we have another hearing on this issue. I, I'm kind of hearing a consensus, maybe, maybe not from everybody, but certainly a consensus that we're in the, in the range there of passing something with a 5.6 or 5.62. I've already told you where I am on that. So, I, I'm, I'm not getting a lot of feedback from residents, constituents, about the, the difference, you know, that slight difference in the millage rate. Frankly, I haven't had a lot of input anyway from, about any of these topics or any of these numbers. But I'm, I'm still in firm support of the 5.62, at least at this point tonight.
Anybody else? Any questions or comments?
Tonight, we can go, we can still go backwards next week, but we couldn't go forward, correct? So, you could, if we did 5.62 tonight, and then on our next meeting, we could actually go with the 5.6 if we were to get a bunch of, you know, some feedback from citizens. We can go lower. We can't go forward. So, if we did 5.6 today, we wouldn't be able to go to 5.62 next week, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I just wanted to confirm that. Okay. Thank you.
Good question. Any other questions? Or a motion?
I'm like a motion. I move to approve ordinance 2020-48, establishing a tax rate for fiscal year 2021 at the rate of 5.62 mils, and schedule the second public hearing and adoption on September 15th, 2020, at 6:00 AM.
Second.
I have a motion, and a second. Could you pull the board, please?
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Finger?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
No.
Mayor Brown?
No.
Commissioner Robinson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Holk?
Yes.
Commissioner Carroll?
Yes.
Motion carries 5 to 2.
Thank you. Next up is Resolution Number 2278.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mayor and Commission. This item is Resolution 2278, adopting a tentative budget for fiscal year 2021. This item is the tandem to the tax rate, and I'm just going to take a few minutes to go over our process. And for anyone who may not have had a chance to attend our previous meetings, highlight some of the things included in this, in this tentative budget. So, as you all know, the budget development process is very much an ongoing process, beginning with priority development and prioritization at the city commission retreat in the winter and continuing throughout the spring. Budget proposals and changes were developed by staff over the course of the spring. And despite the pandemic and shift to remote work, staff in all departments exercised a lot of creativity and ingenuity to both adapt services and respond to the needs of the community. And those things are reflected and helped inform the development of this budget. Changes to the proposed budget received additional feedback and prioritization by staff at all levels of the organization, including review by the city's executive leadership team. And following the release of the city manager's proposed budget on July 1st, city staff held five community digital engagement and outreach meetings over the course of the summer. We also held two work sessions, one joint work session with the city commission and finance advisory board on July 10th, subsequent meeting with the finance advisory board, and the second work session with the city commission on August 11th. Despite some of the challenges due to COVID over the past year, this budget maintains progress towards the city's goals outlined in the strategic plan. And I'm just going to highlight some of these strategic investments that are outlined in the city manager's budget message. I'll note that their page numbers referenced on here if anyone wants to follow along or find out where we're referencing these items. But in the focus area of sustainability, this budget continues investment in technology modernization citywide, from enterprise software systems to standardized operating platforms like Microsoft, as well as an expansion of laptops and mobile devices as well as an expansion of laptops and mobile devices to help employees have access to data wherever they are and flexibility when conducting their work. Includes competitive compensation investments, including the PBA Collective Bargaining Agreement, which provided for wage increases for officers and sergeants, and the implementation of the nonrepresented employees' salary survey, ensuring that all of our positions are competitive in the market and that we're able to recruit and retain talent and the best employees here at the city. The budget also contains continued infrastructure improvements, including to our stormwater and wastewater systems, as well as phase one of the Largo Environmental Action Plan update. In the area of public health and safety, we have additional police officers, three officers for next year, as part of the Continued Public Safety Staffing Plan. Their investment is targeted to improve the health and safety outcomes for firefighters. We're continuing our investments in infrastructure and comprehensive asset management, including our roads and buildings and all of the other underground infrastructure that we manage as a city. Finally, we also have investments in things that people have used and found so valuable over the last few months, our playgrounds, our parks, and those amenities, and making sure we're doing necessary maintenance for all of our recreation facilities. Finally, in the area of community pride, we are continuing to make sure we're making investments in those amenities that our residents take pride in. And those includes investments to the Central Park Performing Arts Center, technical equipment and upgrades, continued upgrading of signage around the city, the replacement of the Central Park Railroad Building, and a take two on Central Park's twenty fifth anniversary celebration. These are just some of the highlights that we want to point out are included in this in this proposed budget. But we encourage everybody to read the city manager's budget message and the full budget available on the city's website if you'd like to learn more. As we've talked about it in previous work sessions, the budget does include a proposed revenue and rate increase schedule. In the previous item, we talked about that property tax revenue increase. It also includes rate increases in some of our enterprise funds. As outlined in the work sessions, the rate increase schedule was revised for FY twenty twenty one in light of the economic environment surrounding COVID nineteen. Rate increases were reduced or deferred where possible in order to minimize the impact on residents while still maintaining the necessary revenues coming in to support existing obligations and make sure we're able to fund the necessary operating and capital expenditures that we pay for through those funds. Changes since the tentative, changes since the August eleventh work session that we do want to highlight, and these are pointed out in the memo, but they include the addition of the unfunded crime analyst as now funded in the police department, additional funding for emergency management supplies, phase two design funding and debt proceeds for the City Hall Reconstruction Project, some necessary easement purchases to help with ongoing mobility and road projects, funding for our diversity and inclusion initiatives, and most lately, a revenue increase associated with county funding of Squad thirty eight at fifty percent for this coming year. We also noted the shifting of construction from FY twenty two to twenty three of a streets project, but that doesn't have any impact on this FY twenty one budget. But just wanted to highlight that change. And so that concludes our overview, and we're available for any questions about anything in the tentative budget.
Resolution number twenty two seventy eight, a resolution of the city of Largo, Florida, adopting a tentative annual operating and capital improvements budget for the city of Largo for the fiscal year commencing October first, two thousand twenty, and ending September thirtieth, two thousand twenty one, providing an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have any public input on this?
I have none.
Any questions from the commission or comments? Commissioner Holmes?
Hey, Will or Merity, either one of you, maybe even Henry will know, on the police and the fire budget, what percentage of their budget is paid for by the insurance premium tax on the on our autos and homeowners?
I can take that one. So our total insurance premium revenue is in around numbers like one point seven million dollars, and it's roughly split fifty percent between each department, police and fire. And each budget is well over twenty million dollars.
One point seven is pocket change. That's a rounding error. That isn't much for that. I thought we'd, I thought we'd have a far bigger share than that.
No, not right now.
Well, you know what? You might want to explain to the folks out there, the premium tax, you know, where it actually derives from and where it goes. But this is on your home and your and your auto insurance. That's that's where it goes, is police and fire pensions, basically.
And to just expand upon that just a little bit, the the proceeds from those two taxes go to help fund the city's share of the retirement plans for our police officers and firefighters.
Yeah, but I thought one point seven million dollars, that's almost pocket change. You know, when you look at the the total budget. Oh, well. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
I would like to thank staff for including the diversity and inclusion item on there. I look forward to a future of talking and what we're going to do for that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Mr. Robinson?
Thank you. I I really, I wanted to say to thank all of you guys, all the commissioners and the mayor for supporting the 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 crime analyst for the police department. I think that'll be a great improvement for our department. I do want to say on the record now, though, I was just reading an article about Pasco County and their sheriff's department and some of the policing tactics they've used up there using their crime analysts. And maybe we can, Henry, if you're familiar with that, we just make sure we're not heading down that road with. I'm sure we're not by any means.
Yes.
But, yeah, just wanted to put that out there real quick.
That was quite the story.
Yeah, it was kind of a little little nuts, but so.
Scary.
In all seriousness, so that would thank you guys very much for your support on that. And I think it'll it'll help a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments?
I move to approve resolution number twenty two seventy eight.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. I'd like to thank the staff for, once again, really putting together an excellent budget. I like to thank the commission for continuing to focus on on those big things, on infrastructure, on on public safety, on sustainability, and certainly the things that bring our our residents a lot of pride. So moving forward, I hope we continue focusing on those things. And and I'm sure that they'll be reflected in future budgets. But I think this was a, this was a great, considering the craziness that's happened in the world and the since since we've started on this budget process, it's been really well done. And I know that a lot of time and a lot of effort went in behind the scenes on this. And I'd like to thank everybody that's been involved and all those people that didn't have to, that are attendees in this meeting that didn't have to come and talk to us because we didn't have specific questions. I know they're watching too. Well, if if, let's see. Anything from Ms. Day, anything from you? Would you like to speak since you have, we haven't had you have you speak yet today?
I know Alan's going to send me to all of the meetings how much I have to say. No, it's great to see you all tonight. I don't have anything to add to the discussion. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Commissioner Robinson?
Just a couple of things. First of all, again, congratulations, Nikki, on on your new role in Dunedin. I'm sure you'll do a fantastic job. Thank you again to all of you guys for for your support. And thank the staff has has done a spectacular job as well. Again, you guys make me proud to live in Largo every single day. So thank you all very much for everything you do.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Holk?
Ditto on the thank yous to everybody. As always, Merity, Will, and your entire team. Thank you for making this an easy process for us and and you're easy to understand and and the public to help them understand also. But thank you again for everything you guys do.
Thank you. Commissioner Carroll?
Yeah, just echoing what you guys are saying. I mean, we got a great staff. Another important thing to recognize, I think, is all of us sitting here tonight on the commission have been working together for about six years. And as we put together strategic plans and CIPs and things like that, we have managed to keep our eye on the horizon and work towards those long term goals. And that really is a good thing, I think. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
I have nothing, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Finger?
Thank you. Just same thing echoing what my fellow colleagues have said. And it's really great to see that all of those areas that we want to continue to focus on are certainly spread throughout each department. And we see that reflected in what you bring to us. And it does make that very clear for us, as well as to the public, and what our focus areas are. And I I think that's really great. So we do appreciate your work and a great job tonight for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Holmes?
What Nikki said.
Very good. And I already said my stuff. I started out ahead of everybody. I skipped the order. Mr. Schuber?
Yeah, I just want to thank the city commission for your support throughout the budget process. We have a very unique group of elected officials here in the city of Largo. You.
In a good way, right?
Absolutely. Because you you have committed to following the strategic plan, and you also take a long term perspective. Many of you take a a perspective that extends well beyond your current term in office. And that is, that's a very unique characteristic. It's something to be very proud of. It's what makes this special, this city very special. And from the staff perspective, we just can't thank you enough for that.
Well, thank you. It's it's one of the many things that makes this city very special. Well, if there's nothing else, I'm going to go ahead and say, meeting is adjourned. Thank you for all your work. Have a good evening.
Night.
Thank you all. Good night.